Snyder and Wendy Beaumont is the Administrative Assistant taking minutes. Without any further ado, the time is ten eighteen?
Seven eighteen.
Seven eighteen, excuse me. Wow, I hope that's not pretending when we're getting out of here. Seven eighteen PM and the meeting's called to order.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Rich.
I move that we accept the minutes of September eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, subject to any iterations of my colleagues.
September eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, minutes have been put up for acceptance. Is there a second to this?
A second.
Seconded by Tilly.
And... We've received comments and they've been incorporated into the meeting minutes that we have here if you want to see.
I did the changes that you requested via an email.
Excellent, couple typos and stuff, yeah. Tilly, you were not here for those, were you?
No, I will abstain.
You'll abstain, still.
Well, she can still vote on them.
She can still vote as a... She can abstain and we can accept.
Yep.
So it would be two to...
Well, or we can hold off and we can wait just a moment.
Mr. Watts.
Tilly?
Just get in from the World Series, did you?
How long were you waiting in line for tickets?
I wish I had a snappy comeback.
You wish you were waiting in line for tickets.
I gave you two whole minutes, two whole meetings. Let the record show that Bob Watts arrives one minute after we open the minute, the meeting.
Oh, my God, I missed a good shot.
At seven nineteen PM. And on the floor is a motion to accept the minutes of September eighteenth, two thousand thirteen.
As amended.
As amended, and it was seconded by Tilly. And do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you.
You can breathe now.
Yeah. The water isn't here.
Oh, thank God.
Chris, any changes you'd like to make or amendments?
No.
Good, Chris? All in favor of accepting the minutes of September eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All abstaining?
One abstained.
So the motion carries. Three to zero with one abstention.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rich.
I move that we accept to pay the vouchers as presented to legal ads for the Gatehouse Media and to North of Boston who, I believe, the Medical Marijuana Publication. And the... Three thirty-five, ten.
There's been a motion on the floor to accept the vouchers in a total of three hundred thirty-five dollars, ten cents. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, I'm gonna give that one to Tilly. Tilly's on the ball.
It's good to see you back, Tilly.
Well, she was here on time, so she has a jump on you there.
She can have my job.
Seconded by Tilly. Any questions about the vouchers?
Looks fine.
No.
No question.
No questions. All in favor of accepting the vouchers in a total of three hundred thirty-five dollars, ten cents, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Four to zero, unanimous. And moving right on. Ooh, sorry. Minutes. Howard, do you want to bring us up to speed on some of the correspondence, please?
I want to note out the second, third, and the fourth. The second is a letter from Hayes Engineering regarding the Lisa Lane development, which is now being referred to as Turning Leaf. And the correspondence number four is the definitive subdivision plan application from the developer for the definitive plan. And these items are presented here, but they'll be brought up at the first public hearing, which is in the first meeting in November, which would be November thirteenth. The third item is from BSC Group, which is a review letter report of Harmony Lane. And that's being placed on the agenda as well because we've received today some additional correspondence regarding Harmony Lane and the release of some of the bond money. So have a review of that and they can all be brought up at the next meeting in November, first meeting in November.
You're gonna put that on the agenda for us?
Yep.
Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rich.
May I propose we take out of order now the... See, I see no one from Park and Rec.
Yeah, not yet.
Are they requesting anything?
They're requesting extension of time and they've provided some information, which I've given to you in the supplemental packet.
Do you expect anyone to be here, Howard?
I know that Jim Demento from Park and Rec sent an email stating he was gonna have to not be here due to having to go to the airport.
Okay.
But I had spoken with Lou and it was my understanding he would be here. I mentioned that about seven thirty is when we might be hearing it, so...
Okay, why don't we hold off on that then? Yeah, it sounds like a good idea. And we have special permit, one twenty-four, ten street. Decision of approval?
Yeah, this is all business. This is the decision of approval, it's been written up, was sent out to the board. I did not receive any comments back. We have received the MyLars from the engineer, so it's all ready for signature.
And this was previously voted at two meetings ago, right?
Right, interproved.
Okay. Everybody good with signing the MyLars and signing the decision?
I just had a question about it when I was reviewing it. One of your... Just in the decision, was it one of the last numbers? It wrote in there something about the water resource? And I was surprised that we had never done that before.
What are you referring to, Tilly?
Making a recommendation, something about that.
No, it wasn't a recommendation, it was just a notation that he hasn't made application to the zoning board as part of the Water Resource District because none of the uses he has proposed trigger the required review. In the zoning bylaws, there's four: storage of hazardous materials and the others.
Well, what I was surprised at is that that's not the planning board's decision to make that decision. It's really the building inspector has to make that determination. And that's why I was surprised to see that in...
I thought we had that in the response that we asked about it, the original second iteration.
Response from...
We got a response. We asked John Metheer, the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer, about the question regarding the special permit and the jurisdiction for the ZBA.
Right.
Because it was a two buildings on one lot, which required the special permit, and also the water resource, it was within the Water Resource District? Water Resource District, right? Is that the one? I always confuse the two, which one is it?
Right, it is a Water Resource.
Okay. And he wrote us a letter back and that's in the file. I presume that was what it was about.
Number seven, the zoning board of appeals has not reviewed the application in respect to a special permit for a facility within the Water Resource District and for storage, maintenance of vehicles. The application does not consider any uses as outlined.
I was just surprised that you felt it was necessary to put it in because I looked through...
Well, I put it in because it's showing that the planning board didn't consider any of it.
We are not considering any of it.
It doesn't say the planning board is not requiring it to happen.
So we haven't reviewed that.
Where does it say you're not considering it? If you're putting it in, to me, that's a sign that it is.
Would you read it one more time, please, Howard?
The zoning board of appeals has not reviewed the application in respect to a special permit for a facility within the Water Resource District and for storage/maintenance of vehicles. The application does not consider any uses as outlined in Chapter one six five, Section thirty-two that would require such review by the ZBA.
We're not permitting it, we're disclaiming it.
Well, I think...
It's a disclaimer.
I think the safest way is to take it out myself. That's just my opinion because I'm taking it differently than you are in just reading that. We've never addressed what another board has to make their jurisdiction. We just leave it out or the building inspector has to make that clarity and decide, you know, and tell the applicant whatever needs to be done. And that's why I tried to read all the minutes and there was nothing even in the minutes about it, you know, at that hearing, to see what kind of discussion took place.
Right, it was all the letter, it was the letter from the...
It's a good point. I don't know whose jurisdiction it is. I don't believe it's ours.
CBAs.
I would, I like what Howard has written in there. Can I just see it? Because there's one thing that I wanted to add in it and I don't know just where I would put it.
What point is that?
Number, point number seven I'm finding.
Usually we write in that the order of conditions from Concom and everything are here and incorporated into our decision.
Yeah.
And because we hadn't received anything from the ZBA, I wanted to recognize the fact that we haven't received...
Here's what I would put in there. The planning board, at the time of this decision, has not received any correspondence from the ZBA. And to the planning board's knowledge, the ZBA has not reviewed the application in respect to a special permit for a facility within the Water Resource. And that is not part.
All right.
And the planning board is not ruling in any part on a facility in the...
Interpretation of what would be under the purview of the zoning.
There is no decision from the planning board, nor is it part of this decision concerning any issues in that respect.
Okay. Did you get all that?
I'm off the tape.
If you need some help, put it in.
We'll get it off the tape.
I'll get it off, I'll get the exact off the tape. I feel 100 percent accurate that way.
I will amend this section.
Yeah.
Would it save us some time to sign the MyLars tonight?
You can sign the decision if we believe that it will be appropriate done because the...
How about a motion to sign the decision as amended in the meeting tonight? Does that work?
Well...
Did you like...
That wasn't a hearing, right?
No.
Okay.
No, no, no.
So that I could be there.
Hearing's already been closed.
Okay.
This is just a reflect in the minutes that the board is changing the wording in the decision.
Yep.
And that we're signing it with that wording intended. Does that work?
Right.
That does.
Second that, Bob, quickly?
Aye, second.
Motion by Chris to sign...
There's a blue pen.
The decision.
Sign that.
With the changes made this evening.
And there's a Sharpie up there. There's four sheets, there's four MyLars, and the signature block is in a slightly different location on each page, so I have to look over this.
All in favor of signing the decision with the changes made this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Who's got the vouchers?
Four to zero. Who's got the...
Thought I would take them over while I'm here.
Yeah.
That's you, sir.
Can we put my real, my full name when we do this? My mother would be proud of me.
Yeah. Cross it out and put your full name in.
It's got two places here, so...
Yeah, I didn't send it back again.
But what I was going to say, there's no one from Park and Rec here. I don't know, wait for them. We take Mr. Tolman.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
This is Bob. Put this in front of Bob. There we go. Fucking hell.
Bob, that's the, there's two places for you to sign there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. So we haven't done this one yet. We have done this. And under new business?
Mm-hmm. The planning board received an approval not required application for Tolman property on Pingree Road, which is off of East Main, and the image of which is up on the jumbotron.
Do we have...
It's in the packet as well.
It's in the packet? This parcel is zoned RC.
Yep.
Gotcha. And an A&R for East Main Street, rear, division of the tract of land, view scheduled 200 feet, private way in existence on October seventh, 1954, namely Pingree Road. Fees been paid.
Finally paid.
Finally paid, yeah. Okay. Mr. Tolman, would you please?
Would you want to go up and sign the MyLars?
Oh.
No, I would try. It's just sort of like a...
Yep, I hear you.
Nothing above your degrees.
Is it mine? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Principal always gets their apple first.
Yeah. Jim, why don't you tell us what is up? Can I call you Jim? Tell us what's going on.
Well, it's Old Woods Road and according to us, it should be qualified for A&R approval of all the land for forty years. And I think we can meet on the requirements. Howard was out there and looked at it today, gave a few questions there, and I don't see anything wrong with it. Fire chief gave us an idea of what to do because we intend on drilling wells instead of bringing a water bane up there, and he would like some fire protection. And he would like to see a 20,000 gallon reservoir of water there, which I agree with it. Other than that, keep people have some paperwork on it.
Right. Everything that we've received, part of the applications in the packet. We did a site walk out there with Jim. And I invited the police chief and the fire chief to go out and look at the way in terms of adequacy for emergency. And so those reports are gonna be forthcoming.
Okay. Do we have like an overview where we, so we can figure out where this is?
Yeah, here's East Main Street, True Lane, this is the state forest, there's a horse farm right here, and then this is the road coming in to here, and then this is the lot.
Okay, so this is, this is pretty much right after the, East Main Street splits up at Tenney.
Yep.
Off of Tenney there.
You go on your right.
One, two, three, two lots, and then take a quick right.
Can you leave that hand right there? Is that where...
No, it's down below.
Is there senior housing along there, that road on that side?
I don't recall.
Or condos?
No.
No.
That was...
I think you're thinking of True Lane, aren't you? You're thinking of True?
True Lane's a single-family development.
True Lane is a single family, but I thought there was something, I'm just...
There was discussion, a lot of discussion about that.
Thinking of a complaint that was once brought before the Board of Health.
Oh, that was on that lot with...
With the horse farm?
Yes, to the right of the...
Ten thirty-five.
Where that is, at eleven acres, they were trying to put a senior development in there. That was a couple of years ago.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Whereas Matheson owned it and John Longo was trying to put a development in there.
It was a report to the Board of Health of some owners that came from the horse farm, and I became familiar with the site with that road, if you will, or whatever it is behind or next to the...
Does the record show that Tim Howard arrives at...
Next, next to the...
What do you...
Next to the horse farm.
Did the butters get notified? It's not a public hearing.
It's an A&R request. There is no butter.
I always say that because...
Water and heat for you, Tim, if you'd like one.
Thanks.
From my recollection, that's just supposed to be a fire lane to get to the state forest. And that's why I think maybe they ought to be notified that there's a request like this.
If I can just interrupt and hold that point. Tim, welcome. And I just want to let you know we're under new business.
Yeah.
And this is a Form A endorsement request, an A&R, an A&R lot. Mr. Tolman's asking for approval of a, well, the site plan is underneath there, and he's requesting an A&R approval. This was just fresh tonight and walk through and walk in here in the middle, so you know where you are. I'm sorry, Tilly, go ahead. Is that a fire road?
Yeah, that's what that is. It's a fire road to get to the state property in the back. So I don't know whether...
May I address that?
Sure.
That's not a, considered a fire road. It is a road, it was the main road, which happened in the 1800s from the marble section of Georgetown to Rowley. That was the main road, which merged with Pingree Farm Road, which comes out on 97, and it continued, goes over the highway on the bridge on the highway to Rowley. That was a main thoroughfare at that point.
And it's called Pingree Road, not Pingree Farm?
Correct.
Not to be confused with Pingree Farm Road, which is over near Newton.
And if you people don't have any packet, I have documentation where the forestry department says that we share the road. I can give you more documentation.
I'd like to see that. Could you get that to us later?
Yep.
And just from a planning stamp point, I just want to make sure everybody is careful between using the statement of road and way because you need to be considering the adequacy of the way and the frontage on the way as opposed to being a road.
Well, as I see it, we can, a road is a way.
Right.
But a way is not necessarily a road.
And a lane is a way. And...
Right.
Court.
A court is a way. And that's why it reads the adequacy of the way.
Right.
And this is, this is something I'm seeing here. The Form A, you've circled C here, which says it's a private way in existence on October seventh, 1954. But this, are you the engineer?
I'm Jim's son, Mark.
Oh, okay. Nice to meet you, Mark. The stamp plan that you presented says that Pingree Road is public, a public way.
Okay, let me, let me bring you up on that.
Please do.
In 1984, when they come up with the official town map, they just erased that road right off the map. And new people turned around and put it on as a private way, hot way up the road through the forest. And that's it. You weren't that far, but it's a road that continues all the way through.
On the official town map, this, we'll call it the J shape right here. This right here is shown as a private way on the official town map.
Okay. What leads to it?
Well, evidently it's erroneous because we have a professional land survey as saying it's public. So...
Maybe I, let me ask you a question.
One of us is wrong.
Let me ask you a question.
Somebody's wrong here.
Maybe I can give you some tiny answer to this. Do you have any pictures of the old, like an aerial view or a topo, a map style, of the old road showing it going...
Yes.
All the way through that property?
Correct.
Like a USGS?
Can you share it with us, please?
Yep. Yep. It's a map of 1830.
What, a USGS map?
No, it's not a GS map.
Do you need the numbers?
A map that was made up of then of all the area, the whole area, Georgetown and Rowley.
And I recognize this is pretty, pretty recent, this request. Did we have a chance to look up any USGS maps?
No.
Okay, maybe we could check that out.
I've got a question, though. I would like to know why this, this plan that you're presenting to us wasn't recorded. Is that the same plan?
It's recorded at the registry deeds.
It's saying unrecorded plan by SNW Land Tech dated December fifth, 1997.
This, this piece of land has been surveyed three different times.
Yeah.
Because we were ready to bring it to the board the other couple of times and something else got involved, so we dropped that. And now we're really going after it. So that's why even a different engineer is representing me, which is Hayes.
If I can interrupt you, Mr. Tolman. Right on the plan, Tilly, if you look under current ownership, it says reference book, Plan Reference, Plan Book four twenty-three, Plan eighty-one.
Four twenty-three, eighty-one.
So that's evidence that it's recorded.
Say that again? That's what this is based upon.
The recordation at the registry is, is printed right on here.
Correct.
But I think what the engineer is saying is this may be, this plan that he drew may not be the exact plan, or that it's not the plan that's been recorded at the registry, but he's taken his information from that plan.
So where is that plan?
Definitely, he's taking his information from four plans.
The perimeters are the, are exact from three different engineers.
He's got, would you, would you get us a copy, please, of Plan Book four twenty-three, Plan eighty-one?
Twenty-three, eighty-one.
It's on, under current ownership.
Okay, that's...
It might be helpful to, to ask your, well, not your engineer, but your land surveyor, who drew this plan, if you could get us copies of those four references.
Yep.
He seems to have, you know, he's used four references to create this, and that would really be helpful, too.
So have you ever come to the planning board for this subdivision before?
Nope.
Or, or A&R?
No.
So the only thing recorded is that you own the property?
Correct, with engineered plans.
Engineered plans?
Meaning the, meaning the lot was engineered.
And there was no division of land or anything?
No.
Now, you came before the planning board, maybe six years ago, when that potential subdivision next to the horse farm.
I was only here as an abbot of what they were doing.
No, I know you didn't present a plan like this, but you've been before us before expressing an interest in developing that land.
Not officially, I never came, other than just coming on that, what they were doing on that, another name, that lot next to it.
Right, but the horse farm eventually acquired...
Right, they bought it, then they eventually bought it.
From developing it.
Yeah.
And you were looking for access from the end of the potential turnaround.
Well, he wanted to, he wanted to do something with me because he needed more area. And I agreed that if he could do something, we'd do it. But it never, never developed.
Well, it's because the horse farm bought him out.
That's right.
It's in the opposition.
Well, I, I still would like the Department of Environmental Management to be reviewing this plan and, and giving us a heads up on whether, you know, they're supportive or not supportive. and giving us a, a heads up on whether, you know, they're supportive or not supportive of it. Because since, you know, he's volunteered to say that they're sharing the road, we want to know what, what does that mean, sharing the road?
Well, I, I think that it needs to be shown as either a private way or a public way. It's shown as a public way on the plan. It's shown in the application as a private way. So it needs to be correlated, private way, public way. If it's a private way, the drawings will need to be changed. If it's a public way, it needs to be certified by the clerk that it's maintained and used as a public way as part of the application. So that's just some clarification.
Well, you people, you people submitted the information to the Merrimack Planning Board to make that a private way the first part of it.
Right. I haven't been able to find.
That's how it became a private way there, but it was a public way all the way through, all along.
I don't know if you'd know this, but we've just gone through about, I don't know, seven or eight months of trying to correct one of the mistakes that was made, or two of the mistakes that were made on that plant. Unfortunately, you know, like anything, we're human, we make mistakes.
Correct.
And sometimes Merrimack Valley can magnify a mistake that's made in the past.
Well, I went up to see them and they, they said that they just take the information from you and put it on the map.
And they take it essentially from the assessor's office. So maybe that's another source we'd want to check, see what the assessor's office says about.
Now, the other mistake was made in this area was that this is RC, which is eighty thousand, right? And they had it down as one acre, forty thousand.
Yeah, sometimes errors get made. Sometimes.
So it is RC?
It is RC.
There's something from the.
Well, the thing of it is, here's, here's what happened in that area, on the, on the horse farm there. It was squad zoning. They just took Reds at one time and made him one acre and left everybody as, as a two acre. You were on the board then.
No, I wasn't on the board, but I remember that.
Right, there was a.
He was away and they, and they, the, the planning board at the time went up and put it on the town meeting floor and.
He was away?
He comes back and says, what happened?
Welcome to Judge Town.
What happened? They, they cut out my property value half, half a lot. And he says, what's going on? So that's, when, when that came to light, then they went back to town meeting, but they only changed Reds. They didn't change anybody else.
Correct. And they didn't do the front part of his, of the lot with the houses, because that zoning comes back two hundred and seventy-five feet before it changes back to the.
Right.
That they went from the RC back to IB. So you just tell me what you want, though. Bring it in.
Okay. So it would be really helpful if you could get us those four sources or, you know, and maybe we could find out. We can do a little bit of investigation ourselves.
Right.
Howard, did you take a walk out there? Did you take any pictures?
Uh, I only had room in my camera actually for two, so I, I did take some pictures.
Give us an idea where it is, anyway. Can't hurt.
Here's, here's the entrance, right here. Horse farm is over here on the right. This is Pingree Road.
What does that sign say?
No motor vehicles. That's.
It's a lovely walk back there.
Yeah.
No motor, no motor vehicle, whose sign is it?
The state.
The forestry department.
The state.
It's only, as far as I know, it's only a fire lane.
No motorized vehicles?
Yeah. It's a two-rod road.
This is a view back. So it's right across from that house.
Got it. Got it, though. Yeah, that's very distinctive, Alsoni's man.
You have documentation from the state that says you can drive motor vehicles on that road?
The only thing the state, I have talked many times, and the only thing that they made loud and clear was, if you cut trees, do not pile the brush within fifty foot of the lot line. Fine. We've never had any differences from there. The only reason why those gates were put there in the, in the eighties when tires became a problem.
There's a gate there? I can't see.
There's two beams in there with a cable across. There was. And what happened is people were going up there with tires and they were throwing them in the forest. So they gated it off. They gated it off over on Pingree Farm Road off of East Street, and they put the gate there. They gave me a key to the gate, permission, and no problem. Well, just a couple of years ago, an incident happened in the forest that some kid got hurt. And they went down there to go into that road, and they couldn't get into the road because there was a cable there that the state had put there and marked. Now, I had a key to it, and the state had a key to it. So since then, they took the cable down and they just put two posts there. So if anything happened, they could get up in there. But it is definitely the road that goes there, and we have the documentation to, to bring it into you.
Oh, great.
If there's anything you can, please, we're gonna need that.
Yep. And during that time, I'd encourage the board to go out and, and walk.
I've walked down that road a hundred times.
It's a beautiful walk.
I, I don't think I've ever, there, there's no place to pull over.
It's hunting season now?
I just walked.
Hunting seasonal out there?
Geez, every time I ever drove by, I couldn't pull in it. But maybe, maybe it's been cleared out a little by.
Can you drive in there now?
Definitely. There's two, there's enough for two cars to pass on the road. What I did was clean the road up.
Is the gate open?
No, you, all you have to do is get out a cap, pick up the post, and move it to the side. Automatic key, Chris. But I'd be glad to meet you. It's down there. Go on up. You can go on a sidewalk. Anytime. I'm available at any time.
I'd be happy, at the start, I'd like to see all the documentation.
Absolutely. And you're gonna provide all, all of that, right?
Yep.
Okay, great. And anything else anybody can pick up?
Do we need a time period for that documentation because?
You need to get it for the next meeting.
We're under a timeframe. We're under a time.
Twenty-eight days.
How many days?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight to say yes or no. So how soon can you get that into us?
I can bring it all to the next meeting with my representation.
See it before that, so we can.
You want to see it before?
It might take longer with the state to get any comment from him, though.
No, the, the engineer must have it on file. I mean, he would never make a statement like that, but it's a source.
Notify the environmental management that this is the proposal that we're receiving.
Oh.
That's what I'm talking about, to, to let them know whoever's in charge of land in the Department of Environmental Management so that they know that this is going on.
Howard can do that.
Yeah, I don't even think it's called DEM anymore, right? Yeah, it's not even DEM anymore, so whoever.
DEP.
Is it Fish and Wildlife, though?
Probably, could be DCR.
Whoever put that sign up?
DCR now.
There'll be a sign.
It's conservation land.
Yeah, sign. Probably DCR.
Yeah.
Yeah. You could probably vax the plan to whoever you.
I don't think that is a conservation sign.
No.
I thought it said DCR.
I don't think it does.
Yeah, I'll check it out and I'll notify whoever.
It didn't use to, the sign that was there before that. And then there are further, if you walk down there, there are other signs as you go further down and get closer to this property.
Yeah, right before this, it shows the trail going right.
Well, check it out. November's coming. We're five hundred square inches a hundred yards.
Relatively small.
At any rate.
The, the planning board doesn't meet in the second meeting of November, because it's the day before Thanksgiving.
Right.
So that gives plenty of time for the information to get to the planning office, given to the planning board members for review. So next meeting is December eleventh.
How many days is that?
What's that?
What I remember from probably eight years ago or so, when he was looking to get access at the end of what was going to be a cul-de-sac, was that this was not workable, and I don't remember why. He needed that access from the end of the proposed cul-de-sac for the subdivision that was on the left-hand side of this property. I just can't remember the details, but if you go back in the planning records, you may find that.
Was that, was that Blessings' proposal? Did he propose something there?
I don't remember. I, I don't think so. I think it was Mr. Tolman.
Let me, let me tell you what the discrepancy was here. As this road comes to the point, right, it showed on all the maps a line coming across way down on the V there in the beginning, no, way down on there, that the forest bound line come across that road, and everybody thought that this was non-existent, that it belonged to the forest. Well, it didn't. And this is where the, the problem was lied all along. Why I couldn't do anything, because they kept saying, you don't own it because the line is there. It was only on the map. As you see it now, that's the way it is. If they couldn't. If you also look at the map that you got, official map, the one before the official map that's in the town report in there, you'll look that the road goes in and it narrows right up to nothing, and it also shuts it off.
The assessor's map?
Yeah.
Those are the assessor's map?
Yeah.
That's usually where Merrimack Valley gets their data from.
But anyways, the next meeting, we can have, and if you request it before then.
The twenty-eight review, day review period.
Your deed?
Yeah.
Is it in our packet?
There's, there's two, there's two deeds, right? I purchased the land in nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy. I changed it over to Tolman Chief Metal Company, because when I built that complex that Enus is own now, BME Engineering, I had to put that up, that land up for collateral. And then when I sold out to Enus', I took them back in my own name. So I really owned it for over forty years.
But in, on your deed, does it describe the land fronted by Pingree?
Correct. I have, I have all the deeds going the whole length of the road. It's all say fronted by Pingree Road.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be good.
That'd be helpful. Okay.
Oh, yeah. We got a packet that is a lot.
Trying to think of any and all documents that would be helpful.
Get that all to Howard, please, as soon as possible.
I thought Pingree, Pingree Road got abandoned when East Main Street went in. Because Pingree Road used to be, used to go behind two twenty-five East Main Street, which is on the other side of the horse farm.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, where the, where all the residential dwellings are.
Yeah.
Say that, where are you talking about?
Ten thirty-two there?
On two twenty-five East Main.
That would be.
That Pingree Farm Road, as I recall, used to go behind that house, and then that got abandoned or.
No.
Something happened to it, and then East Main Street ended up.
Disabled.
So it used to be, that's why it's a reverse salt box. It was never built that way, because I owned that house. I know all about that the history of why that happened.
Wow, okay.
So whether it's relevant to this, I don't know.
Pingree Road didn't go behind that house, which would be behind the, the Huspot. It goes in as it goes in straight and gears to the left a little bit and comes out onto Pingree Road, uh, Pingree Farm Road before it goes over the highway. I can give you all that stuff. You can have it as.
If you would, and copy of the deeds.
Yep, yep.
Shift that all over to Howard, please.
You can have it as quick as tomorrow morning.
Now, what's, what's the story? The twenty-eight day review period is going to expire before the planning board is scheduled to meet now.
That's why I asked you when, how many day, my question was how many days is the next meeting after this?
So you, you need to look at first meeting in November.
First meeting in November.
I would get an extension. Is there a problem with an extension?
Yeah, because we need, we're gonna need more time than that.
I would get an extension because this is a lot of material.
Yeah, but an extension really applies to a subdivision or a special permit. It all does is formalize that the, the applicant of the Form A is allowing the board additional time, but it's not.
But we have, should, the clock shouldn't be set yet because we have much information.
Well, it started because the application's been presented to the board.
Right, so we might have to just deny it then.
Yeah.
But that's one way of doing it, yeah.
That's, that wouldn't, that, yeah.
But I think what you can do is, is get the information from the applicant, at least consider it at the next meeting. And then at that time, come to an agreement with, with, uh, Tolman about if you're gonna allow the board more time.
It's clearly gonna take more time.
And our next meeting is November?
It's gonna take more time.
November thirteenth.
But why do we have to do that if we're gonna present the, all the information for you tomorrow?
On the thirteenth, hopefully.
But that'll start our process.
We don't deliberate in private. We only, we only deliberate at other meetings.
I thought you'd make up packets and give it out like this. Okay.
Oh, we'll see it, but we don't talk amongst ourselves about it.
But I mean, you have your time to go over it before the board meeting, that's right.
But it'll be on just us. We'll have other people involved. Individually, we will review it.
Not as a board. There'll be outside people reviewing this.
So I think it's safe to, I think it's safe to say we'll look at this on November thirteenth?
Yeah, but we want to put it on the next agenda.
Put it on the next agenda for the thirteenth.
Correct.
Sounds like a good idea.
So make a list so that Howard knows what he's, what he's gonna, all he's gotta do. And if he could do this all by the next meeting. Like he's going to, he's gonna find out from the sign, who to notify for the state.
Yeah, who, who had the authority.
Gotta check the assessors.
Yeah.
See what kind of information they have down there.
Check with the assessors office.
What else do we ask of you?
Gather all the information that Mr. Tolman's gonna be submitting to them.
Right. And I'm gonna get information from the police and the fire department.
Comments from.
Copies of the story.
You might check with Merrimack Valley to see what, what Mr. Tolman is talking about. He had a communication with them about it.
What do I need to check up on?
Well, well, you know what I was thinking when he was talking about this? Do we put fire road, fireways or fire lanes on our official town map?
No.
No. We don't. I don't know.
There's roads in Judge Town a lot narrower than this.
Yeah. Like the school is gonna do an accessory road for emergencies. That's never gonna be on the map.
No.
Yes, but Tilly.
Yeah.
If I may. If Pingree Farm Road.
If Pingree Road.
Pingree Road, the reason why I asked historically if it was in existence, then whether you call it the fire road, Tilly Evangelista Road or Jimmy Tolman Road, it's still a road. And if it was abandoned, as Tim brought up, certain steps have to be done by the selectmen to abandon a way.
Right.
And make it private.
And make it private, or, or abandon it, period.
Or accept it. Has it ever been accepted, you know, those kind of things?
It's never been accepted, but it's always been.
But, but it would have been, it would have been in a time, if his dates are right, it would have been in a time prior to any of those procedures. You know, has Route ninety-seven ever been accepted formally?
Perhaps we can look up.
We just need the documentation. Excuse me for interrupting you, Harry. Just, I, I think, in my opinion, I think you should just give us the Tolman, the Tolman, the Tolman's documentation. Copy of your deed, the historical maps.
Might be helpful to see the USGS.
Yeah.
Of approximately something around the nineteen fifty-four area.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a bad thing to try and make contact with them to find out what they refer it to it as. And I would, if it's an engineer that's saying it's Pingree Road.
Well, he's saying it's public.
He's saying it's public.
Must have a reason for doing that. I mean, the guy's not gonna risk his license, you know.
It's a public road, but it's private because you people put it on the map of the Merrimack Valley Planning Board. That's, that's.
We didn't do that. Merrimack Valley Planning Commission does that themselves.
Yeah, it doesn't make it private.
Then we have to correct them if it's wrong.
Then we need to, and this is why I'm asking. If it's a public road, it should be shown as a public road.
Right.
It needs to, it needs to be changed. This is one, once again, a rata on the new town official town map. And we're finding it. It's coming in dribs and drabs. What was it?
I still think it's at Merrimack Valley. I think that's a good idea to put a fire road on the map. I think that's, that's what it's about, to designate a road or a way.
If anything happens up there, fire happens, gonna have access to get in there.
Let's see where, let's see where it goes, and we'll, we'll bring this all back up on November thirteenth meeting, right?
When?
Sound good? November thirteenth?
November thirteenth.
I thought you said there was one in the ninth.
No, it's, uh.
I don't think that one, you can't. Thirteen is our next one. November thirteenth.
Okay.
Good with everybody?
Yeah, absolutely.
So where do you go?
Not a hearing, so we don't close or continue.
Where do you go, every other, every other week or, or just twice a, twice a month?
It's the, what is it? The second, second and fourth.
Second and fourth, okay. Okay. All right, so I'll be in touch with Howard tomorrow. We'll get it all to him.
Get as much of that data to him as you possibly can. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Shut my water off. Now we can shut our water off. Make it turn different colors. Hi, Mr. Manalat. How's your new job?
It's going well. It's definitely, uh.
So you still have a full head of hair?
Getting some packet.
That's a reverse.
A little grayer there. With that being said, I'm opening. Little grayer there. With that being said, I'm opening the continuation of the public hearing. For Georgetown Park and Rec, East Main Street, recreational facility.
Where's the decision for one twenty four Tenny Street?
In front of Bob. He was the last to sign it. Oh, did it go to?
There you go.
And if any-
Look, a panic on your face. You're gonna change the wording though, right?
Yeah, it's just the signature sheet.
Now, I do have a question, and that's that I signed my name Robert, which is really what my name is, but it's Bob there. Would it be better if I signed Robert where it says Bob?
We have that problem. Howard and Wendy have been with us for years and he's still trying to get Christopher, but it just doesn't happen.
I don't, I mean, I don't know if it matters. It's, you know.
Gotta be like a, is that a Microsoft issue or?
I have Lucilda and Tilly home to several things.
I'll sign it anyway.
Lou provided documentation to the board today, which I gave in the supplemental packet, of his response letter to some of the concerns.
He verbally gave these responses to us at the last meeting, right?
Yeah, I actually sent the, I think I emailed the letter yesterday.
It's the twenty first, but it's the board seeing it in tonight's packet.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. No, I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying it's on time or timely. It's, and I'm just driving back from the road that you guys saw on TV with the giant water main break in Boston.
Oh, no, I didn't hear about that.
I didn't know we didn't see it.
Yeah.
Six stories high.
Yeah, well, the building next to it is the building that I use, is my printer, so.
Oh, Jesus.
Was it today?
Yeah, I couldn't get a courier down there because nobody would go anywhere near it, so.
Sixteen foot aluminum boat if you need to use it.
You know, the family?
There were many of those down there today.
Are those wet?
No, no, they kept them dry. Fortunately, they didn't get wet, but.
Where was it, boss?
You know, A Street and Neco Street in South Boston?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, where A Street crosses under Congress Street and the bridge?
Yeah.
I think, I don't know, one of the utility companies, National Grid or N-Star, one of those guys.
Cambridge?
No, no, it's in South Boston.
This is what's called the Innovation District.
Yeah, yeah, ripped right through, ripped right through a water main and it was blowing six stories high.
Must have been a forty eight inch water main.
I don't, I don't know.
Well, with his application for the recreation facilities, the planning board has received, had the planning board received tonight-
Water main guys ripped through electrical and stuff.
It's great to talk, but I'd like to get the meat of this done because otherwise this is gonna carry on for an hour.
Sorry.
And there is a game starting soon.
Yes. Already started.
Oh, okay.
So I have hard copy drawings or whatever, but-
And these the final, final, finals?
Jesus God, I hope so.
Mm-hmm. That's the only one, my friend.
So I was supposed to indicate, there were things on here that I was supposed to identify. Is there a, you have a PDF of the thing?
I don't have a PDF.
Oh.
I think you can outline it verbally.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody wants to see it on the actual sets.
We seem to see all of this, and the responses are all here, all the questions that Larry brought up.
There are responses. Whether they're adequate or not is, I should send them to Larry.
They've been- Did you send them on to Larry?
I did not.
Okay, I'll be sending them on to Larry tomorrow.
And the reason why I'm saying that is one of them I see, if you look at number six, page three, where basically I don't quite understand when our engineer asks questions, was this a boundary survey? Requires yes or no. Or a topo survey? Requires a yes or no. And is the topo survey from an aerial survey requires aerial or topo? And he says it should be referenced. And the response is that the drawings are more than adequate for their intended purpose. The acquisition of additional information having limited relevance is time-consuming and cost-prohibitive to PSC's limited budget. But all due respect, Lou, when our engineer asks for something, you can't give it to him.
Yeah.
Tell him you can't give it to him. You're not gonna win friends or influence any people by saying what you're asking is not relevant.
Yeah, I don't, honestly, having, looking at that right now, I think that might have been cut and pasted from one of the many others where that was the appropriate response. The reason why it says resolved is because he sent back a letter saying it was resolved, the answer that I gave on the previous letter.
I see exactly the same wording in number eight.
Maybe it's resolved and he replied to you that the drawings were wrong.
No, it's, well, I can open up, I can open up, well, I'll open up the previous letter, but-
If it's resolved, it's resolved.
Yeah.
Could you clarify that, please? Because if it's resolved, then-
That might just be-
The next thing to answer to it.
That might just be a typo, because I was cutting and pasting multiple things to multiple answers. And I could go back and revisit it.
Essentially, Lou, everywhere where it says resolved, these are things that Larry's already resolved in a previous-
Doesn't mean anything after it.
Again, that's why I'm saying it may be a typo.
But there's a couple that say resolved with more after it.
Okay, let me just point to the drawings to show you that it's resolved.
Well.
Or you're not interested in that, you're just interested in the word, okay.
Let me go back over here.
If it's not, when the final finals go to Larry for review review, we'll be told.
Is there, maybe it would be easier, Lou, if you just let us know what isn't resolved? That seems to be the shortlist, right?
Well, they-
Go that way?
Yeah.
Rather than going through these all, all of them?
From memory here, the issues were, the ones that were unresolved through the last letter had to do with the first one had to do with the missing camp improvements. That was the Boy Scout lashed fence from the, kind of the four-inch tree saplings.
In that, you're dealing with that in number eight there?
Yes. So I depicted it on the drawings as sort of existing conditions, and it's kind of shown on all the drawings where that's supposed to be shown. I didn't kind of draw it to the individual things because they're all, none of them are fixed structures. It's like a swing set and a-
Just pointing out that it's off of town on land.
I showed the area. I identified what the area was, and I showed that it's off the road, and that's basically what I said in the narrative. The next issue was number twelve. There was a question of the widths of sidewalks, but the sidewalks are all drawn to scale in the plan view.
And here it says the changes were made, the sidewalk widths vary on the run, but are drawn to scale in the plan view?
Yes.
Okay.
There was expansion and control joints shown before, and I think that the person who drew them, I think, was just kind of cutting and pasting. And in AutoCAD, when you cut and paste, it kind of just remembers what you're doing and just keeps-
Rolls forever.
Rolls it forever. So I clarified there that the control joints will be every five feet and I'll read it for you. Expansion joints are every fifty feet. So basically, it's fifty foot, it's a full cut. Control joints are just the kind of the quarter depth cut line. Like, kind of identifying each sidewalk panel. The next item was curving was eliminated in front of the retaining wall. That was your comment about the kind of the bumper effect in front of the retaining wall.
If everyone recalls, we went over these point by point at the last continuation. I think it's just been a while since that meeting and coming back to me now.
Couple of months.
Yes, it has been a while.
So why don't we just send this to Larry and that's it?
Lou's provided me with the revised set in the letter in PDF format, and I'll be sending it on to Larry tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Also needed at tonight's public hearing is a Form H to be signed. Been requested that the, by the applicant to offer the planning board more time to review it. And this expires December thirty first.
Motion to approve the Form H by Mr. Rich.
Second.
Second.
Gotcha.
Wow. Before I call for it, wow.
I've been at these meetings before.
Seconded by Mr. Watts. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Five to zip. Thought you already signed it, Lou. Thank you. Thank you. Makes life easy. It sounds like the consensus of the board is to move this, send this to Larry.
If Larry's in agreement, then we're in agreement. If he's not, then there'll have to be more discussion, unfortunately.
I hope there are no more revisions. It's getting revised to death.
How many trees have we built? Are you using the trees from the site?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, I think if you read some of the comments, I think you're gonna, this is like turning into a tennis match, and nobody seems to have the upper hand. So somebody needs to step in, I think, and referee it. Because I've provided what he's asked for, and I look at some things one way, he looks at some things the other way. So I, I mean, I'm not sure unless somebody gives me clear, you know, if you want a road profile and he wants a road profile and you tell me to make a road profile, then I have to make a road profile.
I think we made it clear that we weren't requiring a road profile.
Right, but there's a number of things in the comments there that show that our view of it and his view of it seem to be at odds. And so we're trying to keep coming closer to that center point. But there may be some things that he's not ever gonna come to that center point. I think you had pointed out before. It's still the board's decision. You take the feedback and so.
Well, just to follow along on what Lou was saying. I'm pretty happy with it right now. I'd love to see what those changes are on the plan themselves. And I'd be okay without sending this back to Larry Graham for another expensive review at the cost of the town. Remember, we're paying for this, we're paying for the engineering, and we're paying for the review. This is a public process. This is a public facility that's being created here. Larry's brought up a ton of good points, and I think we're capable of resolving those points without actually sending it back to him. But I'll defer naturally to what the board wants to do.
But if it goes back, this young lady would need to-
Let's hear what the board has to say first, and then we'll take public comment.
If everything meets with Larry's approval, he should be able to fly through it. And it shouldn't be that expensive. And where it's public money, where it's a public facility, and I'm only one voice here, I really want to make sure it's done right. Because then it will take more public money to make it right. And when you fix things in the field, as you know as well as I do, it's four or five times what the normal cost would be if you did it right the first time.
If I can add to that, if all the items or most of the items have been addressed with this set, Larry's gonna go back, have a chance to look at it, it's all gonna be combed through, and he may come up with, I agree with everything but these four items. Those four items come back to the board, and the board can say, yes, we want this, or no, we want that to those four things.
That's right. That's what I think.
We don't think we need any more response from Lou.
With all due respect, I think we've already done that.
You've already done that.
We've already gotten to that point.
Yeah, but timeout.
It's just so long ago that we're forgetting it.
With all due respect. If I were the engineer and I got responses like you, like I just read, I, you know, I think it would be more politically correct to say, we can agree to disagree, and that decision should be made by the board.
I guess I'm-
Instead of telling us it's not relevant, or telling our engineer it's not relevant.
But they're not. They're not relevant. And then I'm representing somebody, I'm representing another board in town who's been standing on their head. I'm getting dragged through the mud. People are questioning my integrity. That's okay.
I'm not questioning your integrity.
I don't worry about that. What I do worry about is that we're talking about stuff that can be fixed in the field.
Address me, Lou.
Okay, that can be fixed in the field, and that are not critical. I redid the drawings to show a swing set that's not on town land. I'm sorry.
Now, that I agree is ridiculous.
Right, I'm saying, but you know what? There are other things in here that are of similar level. It's all a matter of opinion, and we've already got his opinion. If you want to send it back, that's fine.
Lou, you're a PE. We have our PE.
I understand.
Our PE is telling us one thing. You're representing a client and you're telling us another thing. I'm not gonna cast aspersions on anybody, but if our PE says this is important and you tell us it's irrelevant, the correct answer to that question is I will leave it up to the board. We can agree to disagree that it needs to be done, and it's a decision the board can make. There's the red flag. Okay, that's a point that we need as a board to sit down and say, aye, yes, or no.
And that's all well and good, and that's all I have to say.
Didn't we have a list of things?
She's gonna jump through the ceiling if we don't get it.
Didn't we have a list of things that we wanted to be reviewed, and this is review? Of what our list was?
Didn't we, just before this, agreed to send it back to Larry?
Yeah, so really, shouldn't, yeah, but I-
There were several points that needed to go back.
Does it really make sense?
This was the response from Larry's comments. Lou responded verbally that night, was going to send a letter. This is the letter that he was going to send. And it is now sitting, and we can send it all inside on our own.
If you want me to come back in two weeks after you've had a chance to review it, I realize I didn't get it in timely enough for you guys to review it, no problem. And if you want to send it to Larry, also no problem. I'm just trying to point out that there are going to be comments that come back.
Absolutely.
You know, I reiterated my point, he's gonna reiterate his point, and that's okay.
And then we, as a board, can agree with you.
Yeah.
Well, we can instruct Larry, the technical review engineer, to say, review Lou's letter, and in your opinion, what are outstanding items? You don't need to readdress things that are resolved.
Right.
But from this, give us your final opinion of what are things in your mind that are unresolved in that?
Can we limit it to spend no more than one hour doing so? Because Larry, like any engineer, is in chief, Lou is in chief, and we're paying for the ping pong match.
Let me ask this question. I would really hate to see- Artisan Development, will we be doing this? No.
If this were what?
No, we wouldn't be, because this is a public project.
Well, yeah, and it's my tax money to respect.
I can assure you, if this was Artisan Development-
I'm one of the shareholders of the project.
With all due respect, if Artisan or any other applicant came before the board and took this long to be reviewed, I believe what they would do is they would demand to close the hearing.
Oh, timeout for a second.
And we would have to.
Please don't hit me with this this long stuff. This long is his fault and their fault, not this board's fault, and I will not stand for that and sit quietly having that been said. I've had selectmen tell us that it's because of this board that's delaying this project, and that's just not true. You want a decision? I'll make a motion to approve it, deny it, right now.
You're making a motion to approve it right now?
No. But you want it quickly? We'll get it to you quickly. We've been asking for information. We've been patted on the back and on other parts of our body and on the top of the head waiting for information. Please don't shake your head no, because yes, we have.
I didn't shake my head.
No, not you. Excuse me.
No, not you.
One minute, please. Through me, guys.
Because yes, we have.
Through me, Chris, please, through me.
We have been waiting for information. We have not received the information. It's been on our agenda, and no one has been in this room, so we've continued it. And then it got continued again, and if I take one more set of plans, I'll be able to open up Paper Factory. My colleagues, if you disagree with me- My colleagues, if you disagree with me, please step in.
I think your point is very well taken that we, we've been pretty, pretty judicious about going over this material. But I'm looking at some of the comments that he makes, that, that Larry makes, that are more editorial than really productive engineering. Well, it should be this kind, is it this kind of map or is it that kind of map? That's not really material and I, I mean-
Can you point out what you're referring to?
Yeah, number six, general note number one referenced the survey by others. Was this a boundary survey or a topograph, topographical survey? This one we were talking about. I, I don't really see where his comment is material. He's asking, is it this kind of map or that kind of map?
Well, if you're taking it from an overview picture, it's some, I think what he's, he's trying to find out, did someone actually walk the property?
But that's not what he's asking. He's asking what kind of, what kind of survey?
The note says, base plan prepared from a boundary survey made by professional land services. Actually, I had to add the word boundary in there for, for one of the reviews. So the note originally read, base plan prepared from a survey made by professional land services of Havel in December. Blah, 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 limited ground level topographic ground survey performed by Practical Infrastructure. So if I performed topographical, then whether it says boundary or not boundary, it's still a boundary survey. And by the way, if you look at the drawings, there's meets and bounds all over it, suggesting clearly that it's a boundary survey.
You just answered the question.
I, I understand, but it was, but the answer was already on there before it was even reviewed.
All you had to say was, is it a topography survey? Or was it air?
It's already on there, I didn't have to answer it, it's worded right there.
Two weeks ago, Lou pointed out that note.
Yeah, but that's-
And we've forgotten that. We got down to-
We had a list of like three items.
Bullet points that we wanted Lou to respond to so that we might send those to Larry Graham.
Where is the list of those three bullet points?
I would imagine that they're in the minutes of whatever that last meeting was. Can we pull that up?
I can.
Thank you.
I mean, if he, if, if he can pull that up, we can make a decision tonight.
We can, we can certainly limit the amount of time that we're discussing this. And while we're waiting for Lou to pull that up, excuse me Lou, there's a comment from the audience, would you state your name for the record?
Elizabeth Wade.
W A D.
W A D.
Hi Elizabeth.
Hi.
You're on the Park and Rec.
I'm with Park and Rec.
You're one of the commissioners on the Park and Rec. Please join us.
Alright.
You're one of the applicants.
When we, yes, when we last left this meeting a few, several months ago, there were four items that Lou needed to go and correct, which he did do. And we were under the assumption that he needed to correct to return to you so you all could make the vote. It wasn't a correction that we assumed or thought that you needed to go to Larry to review again to come back to you.
Agreed.
So we would absolutely love for you guys to make this decision tonight, do the vote. Lou has done the corrections that were asked for, there were four items, they were minor details, they were all asked the last time. And we feel like you have enough information, he's done as much as he needs to do. And like he said, Larry is gonna pull up all kinds of other things, which is more time and more money. We need to get onto zoning board, we need to get onto COMCOM, we have people ready to go, we need to get a new engineer now. And we need to build this thing and put it out to bid by spring. And we would really like you guys to take this vote tonight. We've provided enough information, the details are so minor. And we don't believe from an engineering or a safety issue that they, they're gonna have any implication. All of the main safety items, the, the main engineering is there, it's here on the drawings, it's ready for an engineer to go out and take this thing to bid and build it. And the whole town's waiting and we would love a vote tonight, not after Larry looks at it one more time tomorrow and two weeks from now.
I, I just wanna know, okay. I just wanna know, if you're talking about four, how did it get to be forty-two?
Yeah, why, why did we get forty-two responses for four?
You're the one who did it.
Yeah, I remember.
Cause of my, wouldn't be my question.
Four items.
Remember what we did.
Four.
What, what were they?
We had a letter from Larry Graham, which was his second review of the plan. It was not forty-eight, it was about thirty-two because his, his numbering system was off in the middle. We sat through that and we went bullet, bullet, and everyone at the last.
Okay, and that left four.
We resolved down to four of them, which Lou is gonna tell us what those are. And my understanding leaving that meeting was that Lou would respond and those four bullet points would come to the board tonight at the next continuation.
Is that, was that your understanding?
Absolutely.
Okay, then on October twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, you sent a letter to the planning board responding, saying, this is additional information we're writing to offer.
Right.
With all of this stuff.
I, I guess the thing is, is my experience has been, you don't slash things off the list because what happens is unless everybody has a full complement of all the lists, you just keep them.
But you're starting it all over again.
I'm not, I'm just, it's, 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 it's the same letter.
But you don't understand, I don't know if this is identical. I, we just got it, you want me to go and do my homework?
And those four issues aren't called out anyplace.
Compare this word for word.
And if they're four issues, we wanna see the four issues.
But for the four issues that we gave you, I mean, other than the four issues that we gave you to resolve, this is bringing in front of us a bunch of other things that you're asking us to say aye, yes, and no on. If-
With all due respect.
The word resolved is supposed to indicate that-
We already have said yes and no on them.
And that's what I'm saying, if we have said yes and no, why is it being given to us dated October twenty-first? So we're starting it all over again, because once you raise it-
No, you're not, you're not.
Lou.
Larry is going to spend time reading it.
Word resolved indicates clearly that the, that the issue has been addressed and I just have it on the list so you don't-
In your letter, why didn't you say it was addressed?
The word resolved is what's used.
Can I say something? If we saw Larry's review and he would've used those exact same terminology, he would not have missed a point, he would still have every one of them pulled out, but they would all say, resolved, resolved, resolved.
Except for the one typo that you did pick up on, which obviously I should delete that before you send the letter on, because it looks like I cut and pasted it.
I think it comes down to is that anticipation, expectation that there are four items that were outstanding and they've been addressed. And the board hasn't seen that.
But my understanding is those, those needed to be addressed in the plans.
Yeah.
And unfortunately just four items.
The four items were addressed in the plan?
Yes. They're all done.
Right, that's all you had to say at the beginning.
Can, can we just go over that, those?
I'd like to say one thing though, Mr. Chairman.
We haven't gotten them, absolutely.
It's not time to vote, you don't want us to take a vote right now.
Uh, the Park and Rec Committee, if you were so anxious to get this done, why wasn't there a town meeting vote for the money to finish it? You vote, you voted for turf? You voted for-
We didn't vote for it, hold on.
You voted for-
That's a, that's a different project, somebody else created that project.
Right, well, you voted for money to go down to American Legion? You, you had quite a lot of money requests from CPC. Why wasn't this-
Could I make a suggestion?
Time out everybody, everybody time out, one person speaks at a time. The person speaking right now, to my knowledge, is Ms. Evangelista. Can we hear her, please?
What I was concerned about when I went to town meeting was that none of this was on the East Main Street. Request for money was on there. And when we, the engineer comes to us, he, and you, you and other people, it's always been the money, the money, the money. We don't have the money to do this, we don't have the money to do that. Well, you didn't bother to ask for the money last spring meeting.
How much would they ask for?
I have no clue.
Don't do that until this is resolved.
With, with all due respect.
But it just seems to-
If I can clarify something. This project currently has in reserve held CPC appropriated funding of over a half a million dollars available. Just to resolve, and I can give you an exact number if I was able to go home and pull up the files, but it's over half a million dollars available. Pardon?
You don't know by heart?
No, I don't, sorry. It's only know that it is in excess of a half a million dollars.
And how much money was spent on CPC at the town meeting for projects?
Mr. Chairman.
In May.
For other projects?
Yes, other projects.
I'd have to look at it, Julie, I don't have that kind of-
It was close to a half a million dollars.
No, it wasn't.
Well more than that.
Mr. Chairman.
But other projects were well over, well over a million and a half.
Well, that's my point, is that I was disappointed not to see a request for money because all along you people have been saying that, you're short of money, that's why you wanna carry things along.
I can address that. I believe Park and Rec, it's been made very clear to Park and Rec, that they wanted to see this thing completed before showing their face to ask for more money. I personally have been saying, I wish we would just keep asking. All CPC or the town could say is no. And that's okay, but the fact still remains, we're permitting this thing as a complete project because it's linked together. So you can't sort of permit half of it and then suddenly get the rest of the money and say, oh, over here, we're also gonna do this. Because we'd have to go back all the way back through the process again.
Right.
So we're permitting it as a whole.
Yeah.
Right now, they're anxious to get out to bid. Bottom line is, there's not enough money to do everything that's on these drawings yet. And, but you know what, there's still time to go to CPC to request some money. So if we're, if we're on that kick right now, I think this is directive right here, to go and ask for some more money. Ask for the difference, whatever the difference is left from the cost estimate that I put together. And let it fly.
Yeah, and the other thing, Mr. Chairman, I didn't finish. The other thing then, back to what Chris said. In my mind, if an applicant comes here, regardless if it's a town project or not, they have to follow the same guidelines, the same regulations as any other applicant. Why or how can we support skipping over some of our regulations and, and, and business as usual like we do, just because it's a town project? To me, that's flying in the face of, we do the regulations and the zoning, whatever it may be, subdivisions, whatever it is, we do all of those regulations to protect the development.
What have we skipped?
And the people in town.
What have we skipped?
Excuse me.
Hold on a second.
Please.
I feel, I feel like every time this project comes up, I'm under pressure to hurry up and make a decision. I don't know if you all feel like that, but this is a project for, for kids. We gotta be more careful in my mind for a project for children than any other.
We came up with the idea of a sidewalk.
Excuse me.
Nobody said a sidewalk until we said a sidewalk.
Excuse me Lou, excuse me Lou, excuse me. Just so, I, I'd like to respond to that as another board member. Number one, I feel absolutely zero pressure to approve or deny or move anything quickly. I move it at the pace that I feel comfortable with, when I feel as though I have enough information and I'm ready to make a decision. I hope you feel the same way, I hope every board member feels that way.
I don't, I don't for this project. This is the only project that has been-
You certainly should feel comfortable whenever you make a decision.
That has been a nightmare to me.
I do recognize the difference between a public project, using taxpayer funds, getting reviewed with taxpayer funds, as opposed to a private development. And with respect to regulations, I would like to point out one unique thing about this. There is not one regulation on the books about a public park and how it is to be designed and which way it is to be designed. With respect to safety, not at one point, there is not one bullet point that our town engineer brought out in thirty-eight points that even addressed anything, that even came close to saying, I don't think this is safe. That was handled by this engineer, that was handled by the, by the Park and Rec. I think this is a good pro, I haven't seen those plans and I couldn't make a decision tonight, I couldn't, I can't do it, I haven't seen those plans. I don't know if there were errors introduced into them, I have to see them before I vote on them. But what I would like to point out is, there were four points at the last continuation that we were in contention about and only four points to my knowledge. And I'm hearing from Lou, and I have yet to see them myself, that they're included in those drawings. That's where we left this and I don't wanna get any fire in it.
It should go to Larry's first.
Board, Mr. Watts, please.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Absolutely.
Something must be wrong.
Well, what's wrong is that we're one town and we're kicking each other, this is nuts. I mean, I don't think, I don't personally feel like I've been pressured to do anything. I do have a feeling that it would have been wiser to come with a letter that had four bullet points and say, here's how they're resolved. And I understand, because this is, I mean, you can submit this anyway. We are charging down a rat hole in going down through this. We've wasted a lot of time tonight, exactly, we've wasted a lot of time tonight. I'm not placing that on any, on anybody.
It's on me.
I wanna get, I don't care, I really don't care. I wanna get this done. I personally think personally, that it's a great project. And what I saw, I liked.
I agree.
If they're four, if they're, I, I think we want this to happen.
Could I ask one thing? Could I ask that we continue this hearing without sending this to Larry, without spending any more money of the towns and the Park and Rec and the CPC money? Can I suggest that Lou has plans there? Take them home, continue this to November-
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. At that point, look at the plans yourselves, if you're not satisfied with them, then we can send them to Larry.
I just wanna-
If you see something that's jumping out at you, that you're saying, no, this doesn't sit right with me, I have to have an engineer look at this.
I don't wanna see anything more other than those four points addressed. I don't wanna, I don't wanna see the rest of this, I don't wanna see another plan.
And all I wanna see about the plan-
I just wanna see those four points addressed.
The only thing I wanna see in the plan is where they are addressed. I wanna see a list of four things and it's here, 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 and here, and that's it.
Okay, point taken.
The only thing I wanna see, and I wanna reiterate what Bob said, I've never, ever, ever said I was against this project, I'm its cheerleader, but I'm the cheerleader and I want it done right. Four points that need to be addressed, I'd like something from Lou saying, point one was this, it's addressed this plan number, this page right here. That's all, for each one. Once that's done, I don't have, it doesn't have to go to Larry Graham for me. We gave you four.
Right.
How many do you have in your letter?
I think we-
Could you guys name the four?
No, I bet they can't.
I can't.
I know they can't.
That, that-
I know I can. I believe I can if I look at it.
Excuse me, no, no.
Please don't say it like that, exactly, Mrs. Wade, because I'll tell you something, we've got Lisa Lane in front of us, we've got four other projects in front of us, and I don't commit them to memory. And I think it's unfair to ask any board member to commit them to memory.
I'm not saying that, I wasn't saying that.
Address me, please, address me.
No, I won't address you.
Through, through me, please. Please, through me. I, I'd just like to, I'd just like to let the board say one more thing.
If I may finish.
Absolutely.
As for my colleagues, it's that they haven't been pressured, I've been called by selectmen, the selectmen have said out loud at meetings for the school, for the new school, that they didn't wanna come to the planning board because the planning board has delayed this project and they didn't want that project delayed like this project has been delayed. That to me is pressure, he didn't get it, he didn't get it, you probably didn't get it. Tilly was there when it was said and it was said to me. I get it, I just don't feel it.
Yeah, right.
Well-
That's how I am.
That's, I care about it, I care and I take pride in what this board does and how fast we do things. Medical marijuana had to be, had to be done. One other bylaw had to be done. We met every week for six weeks. The selectmen didn't meet all summer.
Let's focus back here on those four bullet points that Lou is gonna bring up to us. Lou, do you have those four points in front of you? Or at the very least, could you come up with those four points and email them to Howard tomorrow?
It's right out of the, right out of the minutes, but yeah, I will, I will.
That's, that's really all I ever expected to hear about this project again.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes. I'm looking directly at you.
Tomorrow.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I may, once those are addressed, if they're addressed adequately, I am prepared to vote to accept the plan.
Is there anyone that's uncomfortable? Anyone that's uncomfortable, get me out with the idea of Lou sending Howard that list, Howard forwarding it to where we can find it, we're all taking a set of those plans home. And we review it and we do what a board can do and has every authority to do, which is review the plans ourselves.
I haven't been-
And make a decision for us.
I haven't-
Anyone else?
I, let me tell you this.
Go for it.
You, you know, when you had your consensus vote, I have been disappointed in that because if Larry says it needs the calculations, it needs the calculations.
They're in there.
And that's what I wanna see Larry be, be reviewing, because he's the one that brought it out.
The calculations are how to size a rain garden. It's, it-
That's not what the calculations- That's not what the calculations were for, they were for the road.
I think it's.
And you didn't wanna do it.
They're not for the road, what am I calculating for a road?
Because that's what.
It's, first of all, it's not a road, it's a, it's a gravel driveway. Okay? It's a gravel driveway, what am, what am I calculating for a road?
Is it on the list of the four items? If it's not, let's just, let's just.
It's all I wanna see, the four items that this board, and I'm happy.
Well, that's, that's why I'm, I'm not gonna vote for it, I'll tell you. I want the project, but I want those calculations for that, whatever you wanna call it. Driveway or whatever. Larry wanted it, and when Larry is the engineer, experienced engineer, has been working for this town for eons of years, and I'm, and I'm supportive of him.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Rich.
Would my colleague be kind enough to show me Larry's correspondence?
It's probably in a previous meeting, because we've had, we've been going over this from two thousand and eight.
If you can find it, would you send it to me so I can see it?
Two thousand and eight.
Because, you know, I, I, I don't remember it.
He even wanted calculations by the Baptist, well, the New Community Church.
What you're, what you're referring to.
May I point out, may I point out that those, that was the same correspondence wherein Larry questioned why this board would approve something that was such a, I believe the term was, uh, untouched and pristine woodland for only a ball field.
He said it more than once to do the calculation.
Where he waxed philosophical about the idea.
I can tell you, I can tell you exactly what you're discussing right now. The issue was about stormwater management on the paved sections of, of what's existing paved now. And what he said was, that this project will increase the runoff to East Main Street. Except, he missed the part about how most of, a, a, a significant portion of the upper section that's paved now in their parking lot, which will be lowered to facilitate adequate handicap accessible ramps at moderate slopes, would now be shedding to the back, which is reducing the flow to East Main Street, not increasing it. And that's what he was asking me to calculate. I'd be happy to calculate, to show you how it goes down. And then what do I do?
No. Four items, Lou, you have enough items.
But then we say, that's the, that's the issue.
Back to me guys, back to me guys.
What he said.
Please, four items. Through me, anything else, let's.
It's very frustrating.
Four items. Anyone, anyone have any other concerns, other than those four items?
No.
Well, getting back to the regulations that you were referring to, Mr. Chairman. If I recall correctly, you were the one who, who started the bylaw to have this as a special permit. Prior to this, there never was one.
I, I understand.
He, in two thousand and eight, you were the one that got a hold of Nick to write the bylaw. Since that time, why wasn't regulations presented?
This board never promulgated any regulation.
Nick was there, so we should have done it.
We never promulgated any bylaw. This board failed to do so.
Just dropped the ball.
This board.
It doesn't mean that you can't have a special permit process.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Just means that the criteria established for the design are not as definitive as other ones, and that's okay.
Okay.
I agree.
One, one person speaking at a time, Chris?
Point of personal, personal privilege, please. With all due respect to what was then, this is now.
Good point.
What was then, who cares?
Yep.
Today's today.
Today's today.
We have four points, can we get with the four points?
Tomorrow is tomorrow, and that's when Lou is going to send Lou, Howard, the four points. And we're all gonna take those.
And with the reference, if I may.
Tell us where we can find it.
Where we can find it, yes. Done.
Lou? Tomorrow? Please?
Thank you. Is that, yes?
Well, we have it on, so we have a videotape that, with a time constraint? I don't care about the videotape, look me in the eye and tell me.
Tell Larrys.
Yes, public comment?
Parking Rec's interpretation then is that on the thirteenth of November, you will be ready to take a vote on this permit?
On the thirteen, uh, we're about to make a motion to continue. What we do on, at the continuation is what we do. So moved. And I saw a hand, I'm just sorry, I don't wanna cut off. Sue Coffield? Yes. One of the Park and Recreation Commissioners, yes, Miss Coffield.
I just wanted to say, thank you, as a volunteer, I'm a volunteer, you guys are volunteers. It's, we're trying to do something passionate for the city, and, um.
Town.
Well, town, sorry, town. And we're doing it blind, and people don't realize, like, we're, we're trying to do this as best as we can, and we are just getting step back, step back, step back. And we're not trying to make it hard for anyone, we're just trying to do the project right. You know, because we want it as safe as possible, we want it as right as possible. And, you know, and we definitely do wanna get it there, but as you said, it's been a, a long time. And we're not trying to make it difficult for anybody, or passion not there, believing the passion's there. And we wanna keep it there, and that's why, you know, just as a volunteer, thank you for taking the time, but no one's trying to extend it anymore, we just want it to end.
Thank you, Sue. Yes?
Juliette Rec, Park and Rec.
Hi Juliette.
Hi. Um, just as Elizabeth and Sue stated too, we hear your frustration from Tilly and from Rich. Um, don't think that not one day I'm on the playground with my kids, that everybody that knows me in town and knows that I'm on Park and Rec has a pretty nasty comment to say. I've been in this town for three years, as soon as I got on Park and Rec, right after I moved here is when this project officially was opened and got started. And I dodge people all the time, because I know the comments are coming. So I hear you, I see the selectmen all the time, at all different kinds of meetings and in town, and I always hear comments too, not necessarily always positive by any means. I hear comments about the planning board, I hear comments about CommCom, comments about Lou, comments about our capability, you know, who we hired, whatever. But just, I mean, I have frustrations too, you know? I remember Lou specifically saying, year and a half, two years ago, you know, please help, guide me in some direction, there's no like set laws on this, there's no set regulations, and I'm not an engineer. And I remember him saying, you know, please help me, I don't wanna waste any more of their time. Park and Rec's frustrated, the town's frustrated, the selectmen are frustrated, and that was a long time ago. And you know, I understand, as you said, Tilly, you don't wanna cut corners. We have to be treated just like a private entity is treated. But I also see the frustration, everyone in town, it's my taxpayers' money, Rich, it's yours too, just as you were commenting. It's everyone's taxpayer money too, with CPC funding, and I mean, the frustration's definitely there. And you know, just this Park and Rec Commissioner, we just want this done. Going back to Larry, I mean, I really hope at the next meeting, please, please, take the time to review the plans at home, because I really hope we don't have to spend another thousand dollars, eight hundred dollars, three thousand dollars of our taxpayers' money going back to Larry. Tilly, I understand your concerns, but please, I hope, you're all very educated people, please, I hope you can make some type of a decision at the next meeting. We want construction done. And to answer your question, why we don't ask for more money, we were give, we were approved a hundred and thirty-five thousand at last town meeting for Park and Rec to move forward with another project with Park and Rec for American Legion Park. And that's to rehabilitate the playground, because it's not really safe anymore, and it needs to be done. The reason Park and Rec has not asked for any more money on this project is because the town will probably say, no way, we're not gonna give you a dollar more, because you haven't showed us anything. We, they gave, this town gave us a ton of money, over a half a million dollars that's allocated for this project. Here we are, years later, we haven't even put a shovel in the ground. There is no way we are gonna ask this town for more money until this is approved, we have a permit, and they see some construction, or the town is gonna laugh in our face, pretty much like they're already laughing at us about why this has taken so long. And, and that's why we're not asking for any more money. In the meantime, Park and Rec has many members, we're moving forward with other projects, hoping we can get them done. I mean, we're always working on a lot of different things, but we're not asking for any more money until construction starts. We just, we can't. Because it's not our decision whether we get it, the town's gonna say no. I mean, that's my opinion. But, so that's why, please, please, let's try to.
The other thing, the other thing Juliette is, people just simply don't understand how long a lot of these projects take, even when they're moving at the speed of Georgetown lightning. They're, they take a long time.
I know, there's a lot of red tape.
You're gonna see that with the turf project, you're gonna see that with the.
With American Legion Park, I know, there's a lot of red tape.
No one knows how truly long these things take until you sit behind.
And in your defense too, I hope when people approach you in town too, you know, and I don't know a lot of the technical details, I know there's a lot of red tape. But in Lou's defense too, I mean, I just remember him saying, please, help, give me some guidelines. I mean, Lou's, Lou's a good engineer, we hired him based on his reputation, and he's got a lot of heat through this project too, and we all still respect Lou, and we hope that he can, we can get the special permit approved, and then, you know, unfortunately, we do have to hire somebody else. But, um, yeah, I, I know there's a lot of red tape, but yes, please, take the time to review the plans, I hope it passes, so.
I seem, I seem to remember back in the early, early stages of this, that we were asked for our advice on safety and, and whatnot. We didn't, at, our initial reaction was like, well, you got Lou. And I don't know how it ended up, that we did get way more involved in this in the design phase, early on. We reviewed what Lou originally gave us, and then there was a lot of back and forth, and that took a lot of time. We weren't trying to delay things, we were asked to get involved in certain aspects, like the safety aspects at least.
Well, we're near the end, hopefully, so, again, hopefully these drawings will be meet to your approval and, and we'll move on to a vote.
We all share that sentiment.
That's hope.
I'd like to ask if there's any more public comment?
Can I hand these out?
Yeah.
What comment?
I just have.
Mr. Chairman, when I saw this correspondence, the twenty-first of October. It was my belief, because everything was on here, that we were revisiting everything. Being reminded that there was four bullets, four points that would be addressed. Once those four points are addressed, that's fine. But. Anybody else have any comments? I'll hear a motion to continue this to November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Second. I mean, I'm.
A motion by Mr. Rich.
Chris already said.
To continue to November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, seconded by Mr. Watts.
Who's bringing the champagne?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I did, I, I sent him an electronic one, but give him one and I'll have more sets made, that's fine. Nobody, unless somebody doesn't wanna set.
I don't need a set.
Then you can give it to Chris, the other one can go to Harry, it's also.
Can you send me an electronic one?
I can.
I'll send it to, because Lou provoked the planning.
Thank you for PDF.
If, yeah, I would rather have electronic copy as well. Thank you.
Scott, killing trees, we can kill megabytes, they raise them just for that purpose.
In the farm, there's a big megabyte farm down there.
With pixels.
Thank you Lou, thank you Park and Rec Commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman.
The one I signed with.
Truth of the file, Howard. There is, I mean.
How's one to go watch?
How's.
Both.
Truth of the file, right? Think you should, Bush or Chair? Second, Andrew? What else you have, buddy? Make it happen.
The, uh, release of escrow funds, there's two of them.
What are these guys?
Rock Pond Estates. Rock Pond Estates, the first one, Rock Pond Estates, this is an escrow account that was established for the preliminary subdivision review. After the preliminary plan was approved, it was sold to a different entity. The planning board previously released, I believe in the last year, escrow funds that were set aside for the definitive subdivision as well as site inspectional services, so.
So I'll take a motion to release M account.
Two six four six three.
Two six four six three, Rock Pond. For discussion purposes. Estates.
In the amount.
Motion by Chris, seconded by.
Me.
Bob seconds. Okay, go with it, discuss. Question to our planner, has Richardson Lane been accepted?
Richardson.
Music?
Richardson Lane has been accepted, but this particular escrow account has to do with the preliminary.
Prior, way, way, way before.
Right, before the definitive even came, so.
That answers, I, I, hopefully that should answer everybody on the board's questions.
Yeah.
That's why I asked it. Should have been released, it should have been released when the definitive was filed.
Nicely, yes.
All in favor of releasing?
Aye.
Motion carries. Five to zip. Mr. Jim? And Mr. Rich? Move that we release the escrow funds. M account. M account, two six four seven one. Four seven one. And that is Blueberry Lane. For discussion purposes. Mm-hmm, second for that?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by, seconded by Tim.
Is there music for every one of my motions?
Yeah, every time Chris makes a motion, I hear music.
It's a call from Jamaica.
This is great. You really have to.
Are you getting the score for the game?
When your face is starting to match your sweater.
Seconded by Tim.
At least you got good, good taste in music, I like that. Exactly.
Um, Blueberry Lane's been accepted by the town for how many years now?
Uh, two.
Two? That answers all the questions. Okay, all in favor of releasing the Blueberry Lane M account, uh, what is it, uh, two six four seven one, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Chairman? Think we have to sign some releases there, certificates of votes there, right?
And after you sign these, those board members that haven't, would you please sign the, uh, the mylaws?
No, that's extra.
Is it this year that the Super Bowl's gonna be played in Jersey?
Yep.
Oh, what's going on?
Mr. Chairman? That's a total.
Oh, and just, I'm sorry, just on a note on escrow accounts, provided in your supplemental packet is a copy of the letter from the attorney for Lisa Lane requesting, uh, or to advise the board that the escrow account for the preliminary plan, it's gonna, once all the bills are paid, they're gonna close that, and they'll open up a new one at the definitive.
Yeah.